Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming and also for those who are watching. So we'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Trulow, if you would help us with the invocation of Fledge of Allegiance.
Honored to do so. Please bow your heads. Gracious and loving God, we come before you tonight as humble servants of this community. We thank you for the privilege and the responsibility of leadership and for the trust placed in each of us by the people of Oak Island. Let us be defined by our shared love for this town and our desire to see it thrive. Bless our mayor, our council members, our staff, and all who call Oak Island home. Grant us courage, patience, and compassion that we may serve with integrity and kindness. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So we have a couple of changes to the meeting this evening. The first is a special presentation that I'm passing to Catherine.
Thank you so much. We are honored tonight to have a special presentation from Chief Todd Coring from the Southport Police Department. Todd, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and citizen staff. My name is Chief Coring with the Southport Police Department. I'm honored to be here tonight, and I would like to ask for Chief Morris to join me at the podium. He does not know that I'm here. Come on up, Chief. So one thing about police officers, as you know, and all first responders for that matter, we don't do this for the fame and the glory and the spotlight, but Chief Morris's duty and service to a mass casualty incident we had in Southport speaks volumes to his character and his leadership and the partnership that we share in Southport. So as you know, September 27th was a very horrible incident for the city of Southport. We had a mass shooter in our American Fish Company in our waterfront corridor. Chief Morris was one of the first phone calls, I think I remember getting that night when I was notified at home that we had an active shooter downtown. He just called me up, said I'm on the way, and that was it. So I get down there, start evaluating things. We start dealing with what we have, and the chief shows up, and he pretty much stood by my side the whole time, in my shadow, a lot of leadership, a lot of back and forth with him. And so I just wanted to honor him tonight. He's being given the meritorious service award of the Southport Police Department, one of our highest awards that we issue. So it reads, "On September 27th at approximately 9:25, the Southport Police Department faced an unprecedented event for the city of Southport that would shake the entire community, a mass shooter incident at American Fish. Chief Morris demonstrated exceptional composure, decisive leadership to ensure the safety of others, and helped secure the scene. Chief Morris, through exemplary foresight and command presence, maintained span of control despite the chaos and stress of a mass casualty incident, facilitating critical decision-making skills that mitigated further harm to both civilians and first responders, leading to the rapid apprehension of the assailant and the preservation of life. His service speaks highly of him, his family, and the Oak Island Police Department, given this night today, December 2025." So Chief, I wanted to give this to you, a token of our appreciation.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
This means more to me than words, and I did want to give you a little something on my behalf as well with this, just something that we, our coins that we have in an outlay of Southport. But Oak Island Police Department, we have a great working relationship with Oak Island Police Department. So of course, we all know now that Oak Island, the assailant ended up in Oak Island, so that was another plus for him being right there to my side. I remember when he pulled me to the side and said, "Chief, we think we have your shooter in Oak Island." So that helped us tremendously on the scene. The apprehension of the suspect was around 45 minutes, which is something that we're very proud of, something kind of unheard of across the country. I've received calls from all over the state and country praising us. I met with the governor along with Chief Morris a couple of weeks ago, and he also expressed his appreciation for the rapid response and the partnerships that we share here in Brunswick County. We're fortunate to have 12 police departments and our sheriff's office, our Coast Guard, state and federal partners, and they were all right there. We had about 85-plus police officers on the scene that night, as well as 30 to 45 fire and EMS personnel. So again, I appreciate you. I just wanted to come by and say, I appreciate y'all letting me share the floor briefly this evening. It was kind of last minute. You know, cops are kind of bad for that, but thank you for allowing me to share the stage tonight. So Chief, thank you very much.
Well, they told me, they told me to do it. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Coring, and well done, Chief Morris. Next on the agenda are the adjustments, and we have a couple that I emailed to council. One is the beach nourishment funding consideration, which Catherine has presented to us before. If we can add that as under Old Business 4.2. And then Catherine has asked if we could move the administrative reports at the end of the new business, after the new business. Are there any other changes to consider? Do we have a motion to accept the changes?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Next is public comment, and again, if you'd give your name, where you live, and you have roughly three minutes, or no, I'm sorry, not roughly, but you do have three minutes to speak. If you find that that's not enough time and you have written comments, you're welcome to submit them to the clerk, Lisa Stites, for the purpose of the minutes. And given that this is a business meeting, if you could please address all of council and keep your comments to a professional level, we would appreciate it. Who's first? Person?
My name is Bill Lambertson, and I live at 2601 West Oak Island Drive, and I'm here to address the right-of-way issue, and I've given everybody a copy of just a one-page statement. That's all I want to make. I won't hold you up. I'm a U.S. Army Disabled Vietnam Veteran, and we purchased our house in 2017, and I parked our RV, which is a fifth wheel, on the right-of-way next to our house for a week. A police officer from Oak Island stopped and informed me that I could not keep the RV there on the right-of-way. He told me that according to the Oak Island parking ordinances, I could park there, only park there for 72 hours. Shortly after, we began storing the RV at Martin Storage on 211. We take about four or five trips a year and have always followed the police officer's instructions when bringing our RV to our house. I make sure that we're never going to have the RV there for more than 72 hours. I bring the RV to our house before leaving for 72 hours before leaving, and then when we return. And I park it on the lip of our driveway, well off the roadway, and if you will see a picture attached to that, that was taken by the town inspector. My explanation for the importance of this parking, our RV at the house, is due to my disability, I cannot walk well or lift heavy objects. I depend on my wonderful neighbors to help me, and I will divide things into smaller amounts to load into the RV. I am also slower, which takes time to get ready on a trip or when returning. Having our RV there for 72 hours, which I've done since 2017, has made it much easier, less stressful, and accommodates my disability. We received a letter on September 15th from the town informing that we can no longer park there at our house. I reached out to the planning department and asked for a special permit, and they told me, Taylor Davis told me, they did not have one. Also reached out to the police chief, and he was unavailable to talk to me. John Anderson, the zoning technician, came to our house. We had a good discussion. He wrote the letter. We had a discussion about the reason for the letter, and I had the opportunity to explain my situation about being disabled and how it helped me with the RV to prepare for our trips. I'm asking the council to consider whether one size fits all on those regulations. There are circumstances like mine, 78 years old and disabled, where having an RV parked at the house for 72 hours makes a world of difference. I am sure that many retired Oak Island residents who may have like issues parking RVs and boats that may apply for short-time parking on the right-of-way. My goal today is to see if the town can find a solution that would fit within the town's parking ordinance and accommodate my disability. And I thank you for attention and your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
My name is Bob Green. I reside at 130 Southeast 40th Street on the island of Oak, or Oak Island. I came here to just simply say thank you to the mayor, to John, and to Mark for their time and effort on behalf of all of us. They cared. It takes a lot to do what you have done, and I just wanted to say thank you. To new council members, we say thank you for taking the time to get involved and to get care. Thank you. You do a great job.
None of the lights are working.
Don't worry, I have enough hot air. A little high, oh. I just wanted to thank the mayor, Councilman John, and Councilman Mark for their efforts on our behalf and their time in caring. It takes a lot to do what they do. People don't realize what is involved. I want to thank our current council members for their time in caring, and our future council members for taking the time to get involved in the process. It takes a lot, and thank you. Have a great Christmas, a great Hanukkah, and a great New Year. That's it. I'm going to cut off the hot air. Can you hear me back there?
Hi, I'm Rick Morrison, 146 Northeast 3rd Street. You probably won't even need a microphone for me, but I would like to ask the town to adjust the microphones. The last time I was at a meeting, we couldn't hear back there either, so please get your volume up. I would like to speak on the right-of-way. Since June of this year, I have spoke almost every month on the right-of-way for my neighbors and other things, and the only thing that the current council, when they decided to enforce everything that's been on the rulebooks forever, is inciting discord between neighbors and between the townsfolk and the county council. I believe it was asked of neighbor to report a neighbor if they see a violation. This is also inciting discord, and we don't want to do that. We want to be happy, friendly people. We don't want to say, turn your neighbors in or whatever. And we should also not enforce into the 20 feet into everybody's yard. I believe it was only 10 before, but I do know that realize that you do own 20 feet. So what I ask the council is to consider, is to back off what you decided in June. Let's look at this. Let's put some intelligence to it and not make neighbors mad at neighbors and not make us mad at you. Thank you.
Thank you.
This works. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name's Kendra Spencer, and I reside at 2304 West Yott Drive. I'd like to show my appreciation and gratitude for those who are ending their term. I just thank you enough for all the time and effort that you have put in on this council and for our community. I specifically have the privilege and honor to be Mark Martin's daughter, and I'd like to address his achievements and thank him at this time. So Dad, first and foremost, I'm beyond proud of you and all the hard work and dedication that you have done and shown to this town of Oak Island and the people over these past four years. I've witnessed firsthand the hours that you've put in on a daily basis, serving our community, not only through town council, but as well as being a chaplain for our sheriff's office, all while working part-time or full-time, might I add. Dad, you're the true example of what a hard work ethic looks like. I want to congratulate you on all that you've accomplished during this time. You faced adversity with such strength and humility. When others said jump, you didn't say how high. Instead, you remained grounded in what was logical and truly the best decision for this town and its people. From your campaign up until this very day, you've led with such purpose, compassion, and most importantly, faith. I cannot thank you enough for the life lessons and teaching that you've instilled in our family. Because of you, I'm a better person. I know you will continue to make a difference in our community outside of this role. I am so proud of you, and I'm more importantly, proud to be your daughter. Congratulations on a very successful four years on town council. I love you.
Yes, I did make my sister vote first. My name is Michael Martin, and I'm the son of Mark Martin. And I also wanted to give my condolences and thank you to my dad. So Dad, tonight, the last night of your seat on council, I wanted to take a moment and share my utmost gratitude and appreciation for who you are as a person, your work ethic, who are as a father, a friend, and most importantly, the values you lead our family with on a daily basis. These past four years with your seat on this council have been, made our family a little bit nostalgic as a glimpse into our life growing up in Harrisburg, North Carolina. My father always had an inclination and a desire to help people. From an early age, I remember going to the campaign trail with my mother and my sister in our small hometown, driving around neighborhood to neighborhood and putting flyers in mailboxes. I still believe to this day I have a permanent paper cut from all of those flyers. And let me tell you something, being in politics is not for the weak. But as my father always said, "If you want to see change in the world, you must first become the change you want to see, not by any specific heroic action, but by who you are and more importantly, how you treat people." My father's love for people and helping them find resolution has been such a joy to see growing up. There has never been a single person my dad could not talk to or hold a meaningful conversation with, something I believe has been passed on to me. Four years ago, my family and I were reminiscing on this night when you were sworn in, the memories we shared of our childhood, and how proud we were of the way you step in and led with integrity for so many others, all while always keeping your family first. So tonight, Dad, I thank you for all that you have done and accomplished these past four years, for being a voice of reason and logic, while also understanding different issues from a local perspective, holding firm in what was right even if others were aggressive, all while being humble and knowing that the decisions you made in this room were for a greater purpose than yourself. We celebrate you tonight, just as we did four years ago, reliving the nostalgic heroism and love for humanity that you live out each and every day. I know you have poured your heart into this community, and while working full-time and volunteering at the Brunswick County Chaplain, and while not knowing what's planned next, there is one thing I do know, and that is you will always have the best in people, you always have the optimism in your heart, and your faith will guide you to your next adventure. I'm so proud of you, Dad. I love you. Merry Christmas to all and happy holidays. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Mayor, City Council, I'm Todd Stewart, 330 Northeast 49th Street. I've been here about two years, and I want to say I came from a very small town where the city council couldn't do anything. They basically argued, they basically infat, and they did everything they could to keep from getting things done. I want to thank you guys for all the hard work you guys do. I don't think most of us realize how much work it takes to be a city mayor or a town council person. You spend endless hours working with paperwork, going to meetings, doing all kinds of things, and you do it out of the goodness of your heart and your love for the community. I really thank you for that because, again, that's what makes this town great. I hope everyone else can recognize someday how hard you do have to work to get these things done. I do have a wish for the future, though, and it's very simple. I'd like to see more information come from the town council. I want to hear about things such as the rec center, where it's going. Again, we had bell drums where we don't hear anything. I want to hear about the roadwork that's going on. I want to hear about all the wonderful things you guys are working on so people can recognize all the things you do and appreciate all the efforts you put in each and every day. Before I leave, I just want to wish you all a Merry Christmas, and one more time, thank you for all your help.
Good evening. My name is Robert Kopp, and I live at 128 Northeast 5th Street. I'm not here to complain or object to anything, but rather to extend some gratitude to the town of Oak Island, some of its employees, and the town council. I spoke at last month's town council meeting about an issue I had concerning the storage of town-owned gravel, sand, and a backhoe at the end of my street. Less than one week later, all the town-owned materials and equipment were removed, and the Public Works Department did a nice job cleaning the area out as if it hadn't been touched at all. Although there were five trees that suffered damage, all with about a two-inch DBH, and are dead as a result of the storage of material, the view down Northeast 5th Street is mostly like it was prior to the materials being stored there. As an aside, I learned what DBH stands for as a result of attending last month's meeting. I would like to personally and publicly thank the town council, and specifically Ms. Carter and Mr. Kraft. I would like to thank town manager Ms. Catherine Adams and assistant town manager Mr. Kent Jackson. I would also like to thank the Public Works Department for not just removing the materials, but doing their best to make the Northeast 5th Street extension look as it should. In my opinion, the town acted upon a citizen's concern, corrected an error they had made, and the town simply did the right thing. I think it's right and proper to acknowledge these positive actions. As we move forward, there are priorities that need to be established, and I would submit to this body that the full-time citizens of Oak Island, such as myself, who pay 90% of the taxes, continue to always be your first priority. Businesses and tourism should not be the first priority. Thank you again for acting quickly and making Northeast 5th Street look nice again, and you can pave it anytime you like. We'd all like that, too. I appreciate your time and efforts. Have a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and enjoy the holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. John, let's start with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to begin by acknowledging two of my colleagues. Mr. Martin, thank you for your fiduciary leadership, your fiscal acumen. It's one of the prime reasons we've not had a tax increase in eight years, despite expanding services, despite adding staff. It really was a work of art. I want to thank you also for being my partner in safety, and it's nice to see concrete finally being paved five years later, but you were stalwart in both of those things. And Madam Mayor, thank you for your leadership in the post-pandemic era, which presented some unique challenges, and thank you for leading in the major transition in our management team. So we appreciate your service as well. I'd like to first and foremost thank the citizens. It's been my privilege to serve for 11 years, the way I count the years, Par 3, Beach and Inlet Committee, and just anecdotally, the fight for sand began 10 years ago, 10 years ago. So the mills, the gods grind slowly here, but there is sand on that beach, and we are thankful. And lastly, the land use plan, so twice elected to council. I really appreciate your confidence and your support. I have a great deal of affection, affectionate nostalgia, for those citizens who rallied to my campaign flag as a relative unknown in 2017, made me the leading vote getter, and again in '21. I deeply appreciate how much you meant to my campaign and what you meant to this town in electing representatives who were committed to serve you. I also want to say that none of this would be possible, none of it would have occurred without the encouragement, the support, the forbearance of my wife, Mimi, my wife of 47 years. Thank you. I appreciate it and love you. And lastly, Merry Christmas to all, and I have a date with spring, I believe. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, John. Phil?
Sure. I attended the Oak Island Strategic Plan Work Group, which has been going on, 10 or 12 members of our community's been working on that. Came up with a very good, developed an economic positioning statement that I think everyone will be very proud of once it gets released. A lot of good work's been taking place on that, and that's exciting. Shout out to Rose Braun for pulling off this Christmas parade. She and Mother Nature did not get along, but we had a very good Christmas parade, and that was exciting, as well as Parks and Rec Department put on a very good holiday market the very next day, so that was exciting. I've been attending some different advisory board meetings, hearing what the different advisory boards are up to. But lastly, I want to say it is very good, although he's not sitting on this side of the room, he's sitting on that side of the room, it's very good to see my friend Mark Spicer here tonight. Hello, Mark. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mayor. As Councilman Kraft just said, that the Economic Development Strategic Plan has completed a third meeting with three more meetings to go. I'm excited for the work of this committee and look forward to hearing their recommendations for 2026 and beyond. Congratulations to our two new council members, Tommy and Chacey, and our new mayor, Chris. I'm excited to work alongside you, serving the residents of Oak Island. And lastly, I wish Mayor White all the very best. It's been a pleasure working with you. She has served our community well, and I ask her to continue serving our community in whatever capacity she may be interested in. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank our two departing colleagues, Mark and John. I do appreciate your leadership and your guidance, particularly as it deals with the budget. You all are masters of that process, and I think we're going to miss you when this April rolls around. And while we didn't always agree, or we didn't always vote the same way, I still want you to know that I appreciate the time and service that you put in for our town. The mayor, I would be here for a few hours if I told you everything the mayor has done for this town, so just know that you have my gratitude. I'm grateful for all the work you've put in, all the doors you've opened for our town. You've made us a much better place than we were a few years ago. And to our new, my new colleagues, to the mayor-elect and to council members, I welcome you. I know you're ready to go and get to work, and I'm looking forward to helping move the town forward with all of you, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark?
First, a quick report from Cape Fear RPO. We had our last 2025 meeting in November. Good news, they announced that there was some money laying around. Who would know from the state, right? So the- So the state has some extra money, good news, and so they reached out to municipalities asking for smaller projects that we felt passionate about. So of course, pedestrian safety is always the first thing that comes out of my mouth. Sam did reach out to Matt. Matt did mention several projects. We will find out in the spring if any of our projects that we submitted for this extra funding that was available will get built or put in place. So I want to thank the Cape Fear RPO Board for calling that to our attention. I want to thank Matt for collaborating with Sam and making sure that that topic stays first and foremost. And my prayer is that as we move forward with the RPO Board in my absence, that we continue to emphasize pedestrian safety and accessibility as a key modality here in Oak Island. I promised my wife I wouldn't cry. All right. I want to thank all council members, the previous council that I worked with, current council. As Councilmember Carter pointed out, we don't always agree, but we had good discussions. We generated ideas. We brought what I hope to be information into the discussions, so you learn as well as we share. So just gratitude for all councils that I've had the pleasure of working with over the last four years. I do want to extend a special thank you. This is going to be hard.
It's okay. Take your time.
To Councilmember Bach, I think jokingly, early on, four years ago, we made reference to being on the opposite end, me on the right, well, stage right, and John on the far left. But we represented bookends, and I can't tell you how important that joking conversation has turned out to be. As Councilmember Carter pointed out as well, we have been the bookends, especially when it comes to fiscal matters, and looking at the budget and the tax rate and priority on spending and how do we get things done without putting the burden on you. That was always the main focus when John and I would sit down and look at the budget is making sure the burden didn't fall to you. So I want to also reach out and thank John expressly for his partnership, his collaboration. We come from different political affiliations. I'm sure y'all figured that out, but by God, we've shown you how to reach across the aisle truly and shake hands to get things done. I also want to thank Bill Kraft, Councilmember Kraft. I know he's not leaving, but I want to recognize the fact that on day one, when I filed in 2021, he was at my doorstep knocking on the door. He wanted to know what I stood for, what I wanted to bring to the town. And if you haven't figured it out, we were peas in the pod from day one. We meshed so well together on probably 98% of the topics. So I just want to, again, thank him for reaching out as a day-one partner and making sure that we took care of you with everything that we discussed and made decisions on. Bill, you now have the tough job of being the senior-most person with John's departure. That means now you have the four years of experience going forward, and I wish you luck in many more years to come. Last but not least, I want to thank God. God gave me the ability to persevere and to have patience over the last four years. Without Him by my side and answering prayers, none of this would have happened. I also like to thank my wife, Tammy. You wouldn't believe the number of conversations we would have on some of these long council meetings. It would be midnight, and I would go home, she would be there and talk me off the cliff. So thanks to her, I maintain my sanity and was able to carry on. My kids, Michael and Kendra, oh my gosh, you guys don't understand. I found out like this afternoon that they said they're going to speak. I went, what? You're going to speak? And the first thing that went through my mind was panic, but then I took a breath and I said, wait a minute, they have strong faith, they're good people, they seek out the best in everyone. I'm confident that they will bring a good message to the podium. A few minutes later, my wife called. Did you know the kids are going to speak? So there was panic in the household, but I love them to death, couldn't be more proud of them. Last but not least, just a quick recap, piggybacking on what John mentioned about beach nourishment. If you may recall, one of the hot topics in 2021 was something called a sand assessment. There were maps drawn, there were rates established. I was in a panic because our property was going to get hit with a massive sand assessment fee, and we all know what a temporary fee turns into, a permanent tax, right? So I campaigned strongly on that. We successfully were able to get that shut down. More importantly, Councilmember Kraft and I rolled up our sleeves, and we said, it's not just to shut it down, we need to figure out how we're going to pay for this beach to the tune of $40 million. And him with his napkin and pen and me with my laptop and spreadsheet, we came up, which is now known as the, I guess, depending on who you talk to, it's either the Martin Kraft model or the Kraft-Martin model. I think when Bill tells the story, it's the Kraft-Martin model. And we've been following that model, believe it or not, for four years. David Hatton blessed it, he signed off on it. We've been following that model day in and day out, even to the point where Catherine, at the last budget update on the beach, referenced that model. I mean, so that was a significant accomplishment, and if that was the only thing we did in four years, then, oh my gosh, hats off to everybody. Hats off to you, the voter, for putting us on to take care of the sand assessment. Hats off to the council for voting that model in. Hats off to staff for following the model. I mean, that's what it takes to work as a community, all right? The other thing that was big in 2021, we need more, another revenue source to pay for sand, right? The cost of sand doesn't go away after this project. It's going to come back again and haunt us in the future. So again, the council rolled up their sleeves, and we got paid parking done. I can't tell you how much of an achievement that motion was monumental in getting new revenue source identified for the town of Oak Island for future years to come. Previous councils had tried paid parking, and it didn't work. We figured out a way to make it work, and by gosh, it is working. So hats off to that initiative as well. I'll wrap up with a word of advice for the new people coming in. Congratulations to the new mayor. Congratulations to new council members. It's a really easy math. Protect the tax base. If you go at it knowing that you have to protect what you have, you cannot establish a property tax rate unless you have a strong tax base to support it, right? So grow the tax base, sustain the tax base, never diminish it. If you start diminishing your tax base, you are in trouble. Now you're going to put the burden on the taxpayer, and I can tell you, I will be at that podium complaining, I will be screaming for my three minutes if you're going to stick me with an 80% tax increase in future years. That's all I have. I know I went a little long. I think I didn't cry. My wife will check me when we get home. Merry Christmas to everyone. Good fortunes going forward. Have a blessed life, and I pray that your journey takes you on a purpose that is fulfilling and satisfying. Thank you.
So last but not least, I emerged as a dark horse in 2020 as a candidate, the town's first four-year mayor, and ran on leadership, relationships, and priorities. That has been my focus for the four years in office. Hope I haven't failed you in the leadership realm. I have worked very hard on relationships and all that they can yield, strengthening the ones we had and building and knew those we needed, especially with the private sector and bringing, helping to bring about the public-private partnership that is the loggerheads, the public academic partnership with UNCW that is coast-wise, which has yet to really get off the ground, but has a very bright future for the island. And then, of course, the focus on priorities. And Council Catherine developed a three-year strategic plan for us that we all supported, and we are not quite, we're about halfway through the first year of that strategic plan, and is the first time that I believe a council, at least to my knowledge, has moved from a project-oriented plan and budgets to one that is truly strategic and that will yield benefits to the town and help guide its growth going forward. So it's been a privilege to work with all of you. John has been mayor pro tem for the four years that I've been in service, and I appreciate your collegiality and your willingness to talk through complex issues. Mark, I also appreciate working with you. I'm a big believer in diversity and diversity of thinking, knowledge, skills, abilities, experience makes for richer conversations and richer deliberations that lead to good decisions for Oak Island. And to Teri, Bob, and Bill, I say, continue on, hopefully maintaining the path, the trajectory that Oak Island has, is on currently. And to the new mayor and council members, I wish you all well. I have every confidence that you will serve as admirably as those who are stepping off this year. So thank you, thank you to the public. It's been an honor and my honor and a privilege to serve you. It's always been about the island, it's never really been about me. That's how I've navigated, and I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and very safe holidays as you go about this holiday season. So thank you very much. So with that, we go to the consent agenda. There are three items on the agenda: approval of minutes, a budget ordinance amendment for state health plan premium increases, and adoption of a resolution concurring with Brunswick County in the opposition to the Fuquay-Varina Interbasin Transfer and request for additional comment. I posted not too long ago about wanting a local session to be able to speak to the Fuquay-Varina Plan in Wilmington, and I hope everyone will pay attention to this PFAS issue, because as the water is drawn down, the percentage of PFAS increases in parts. So please keep an eye on that. It's very important for your drinking water. Counsel, do I have a...
You do, Madam Mayor. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Committee appointments. The first is the commitment to the ABC Board. We have two candidates, Charles Farley and Amanda Wright. Also are the appointments to the Board of Adjustment, James Angel, which he has rescinded his application, and then Carrie McCullough.
Madam May, with respect to the ABC Board, Mr. Farley is ineligible to serve on two boards. That's in the new, old handbook and the current handbook. And then we therefore have just one applicant, Amanda Wright. If my fellow council members would indulge me that we hold this position open for another month or two to give the clerk time to repost it and see if we can find some additional applicants.
How do we navigate that, Lisa?
Yeah, it's at council's discretion. If you'd like me to re-advertise, then council consensus can just direct me to do that.
Counsel comments?
I don't think that's fair to miswrite. There's one person applying for the Board of Adjustment. We're happy to go forward and vote for that one person. There's one person now applying for the ABC Board. I'm ready to vote for that lady.
But relative to Mr. Farley, if you were to vote him in, he would have to drop his BOA position.
My understanding is that that's a policy that, you know, that you all have adopted, and again, most recently, correct? But as with any policy, you all can suspend that policy, or, you know, it's not a statute or anything like that.
Okay. Thank you for that. So I don't know whether you want to keep him as a candidate or just assume he's ineligible, but he can't hold two positions. You're correct.
Correct.
I agree with Councilman Kraft. I think we go ahead and vote and turn him in and see what happens.
Carrie?
I've marked my ballot.
Great. If you pass your ballots to the left, make sure you've signed them. Thank you for collecting those.
Bill, there's no write-in candidates.
Well, it was the ABC Board.
So, Madam Mayor, can I just respond to Councilman Chilo's point? I think if we were to do that, it would be discriminatory, especially to the McCullough candidacy where the other applicant withdrew, acknowledging her prior superior experience. But you do beg the question, and I think council next can consider whether there needs to be a minimum number of applicants, which might be a difficult standard to reach, or in the alternative, how you would treat a sole candidate coming forward. So there are some complex questions there, but I think for this evening, we've done the right thing. We have one candidate because someone else withdrew and sent us an email saying she's the superior candidate, and in the other instance, we have someone who is disqualified by virtue of our own ordinance. So there's probably some work to be done, and that's a bit tricky, but we have council over here, we'll figure it out.
Madam Mayor, if I could just respond to Mr. Bach, I agree with what you're saying. Unfortunately, when we rewrote the Boards and Committees handbook, we left out any qualifications or preferred skills and abilities for people applying for these boards. So right now, we don't have anything that tells anybody who wants to apply for a board what their skills or knowledge is that would be helpful to them as a board member on our boards and committees, and I think that's something we need to get back in there.
And I think, if I may, Madam Mayor, sorry not to prolong this, I think that's an interesting point that you make, and that's consideration. This is what I like to call a wicked problem, because we don't want to dissuade volunteers coming from the public, right, by having standards or prerequisites that exclude people who just simply want to come forward and serve, and arguably, most of them can be trained. So as you look at this going forward, I would hope, look at all the ramifications of changing this. I'm not, well, I'm not opposed, but just the problem needs to be thought through, would be my point. I think that's where you want to go with this.
There's another point that, in all fairness, so with removing Mr. Farley as a candidate outright, we have set a precedent. we have set a precedent requiring someone to retire their one position while applying for a different position so they then could end up with nothing. So that's in effect what we just did by disqualifying him, is set a precedent that one has to retire their current position in order to apply for another position and not giving them the ability to apply and be appointed with the understanding that they would have to resign. So that's precedent-setting. I just want council to recognize that. What you do with it is up to you.
Excuse me, if I could just add to it. So I did have a long conversation with him. And I asked him if he was appointed to the ABC Board, did he plan to retire, to resign from the Board of Adjustment? He said absolutely not. His intent was to hold both seats.
That could be. But if he got the one, he would be forced to retire. So he was just ill-informed.
Well, I think these are matters for council next to review. Frankly, I didn't vote for Mr. Farley. That's the end of this matter from where I'm sitting, right? That's the simple solution, and we'll move on.
Just quickly, I doubt Mr. Farley is going to collect three votes. I didn't vote for him either. So there's two right there that didn't vote for him. But I would echo some of the sentiment that, in light of what's going on, I would have concerns about discouraging people who want to volunteer, about trying to establish criteria. We can suggest maybe skills or knowledge that would be beneficial, but I certainly don't want that to discourage someone who wants to get involved, right? We're a small community. How many times have we sat here with board positions open and we don't get a lot of applicants, right? We filled positions before, over the years, with literally one applicant for one seat on a board, and that was our choice. So I think we have to give people an opportunity who want to get involved to sign up for these boards and committees. Secondly, I think another precedent that becomes dangerous, to the mayor's point, over the last couple of years on Fakebook, y'all know I call it Fakebook, people have suggested that we mandate qualifications for elected officials. Like, well, they can't be a town council member because of this or that or their job or who they're affiliated with or whatever. That's a, we're really now moving into dangerous grounds if we start discouraging people who want to volunteer. And then the next level is going to be, oh, well, let's establish qualifications for elected officials. I'm just warning the next council to be a little more open-minded with trying to recruit people to engage instead of discouraging people from engaging. That's all.
It is. I mean, you're exactly right. I agree with you. But we have some boards and committees that are very special, specially oriented, and you have to have certain knowledge about certain things to be able to make informed decisions. And what we must stop doing, which has been our practice in this town for many years, is putting people on boards and committees because they're our friends and because we said we would. We told them a couple of years ago we'd get them on there. Or in one case, because our wives are friends and we go to church together and we have dinner during the week, that is not a qualification to be on a board committee in this town or any other town. I'm sorry, that's just how I feel about it.
I wouldn't disagree, just quickly. And I would suggest for some of these more challenging board positions that may require knowledge, I know the planning board reached out the last cycle or two years ago and said, hey, here's some special training. We'd love to take it. Will the town pay for it? And we said yes. And we offered specialized training for planning board members, whoever wanted to sign up. So I would almost encourage that, like, planning board, if that's an area of concern, that we establish this training, not as optional, but just like elected officials. When we get sworn in, we go off for training, right? So planning board members can go off for training. I think that's a great idea.
Lisa.
Okay. I do have a question for our attorney. I have one council member who only voted on one of the...
One council member, what?
I only have one council member who only voted on one of the appointments and did not vote on the other appointment. Is that...
That council, if it's not determinative by the others, I think that council member needs to vote.
Okay, it doesn't affect the outcome, so, okay. And so there are four votes from Mayor Protem Bach, council members Kraft, Chulo, and Martin for Amanda Wright for the ABC Board position. And there are five votes for Carrie McCullough for the alternative position on the Board of Adjustment.
Congratulations to them both. Thank you, Lisa. So on to old business. First item is consideration of extending the abatement period for enforcement of right-of-way violations. Bob, do you want to?
I do. Thank you, ma'am. So for the purposes of getting a discussion going, I've got a motion I'd like to make. And the motion being for the next 90 days, staff is instructed to pause any new right-of-way encroachment code violations unless they are harmful to our community, as well as to extend the abatement period for all existing right-of-way encroachment violations for 90 days unless they are harmful to our community. During this 90-day period, council requests staff review the current right-of-way ordinance and bring back to council recommended changes, including redefining the size of the right-of-way, deciding what items may be allowed in the right-of-way, and most importantly, producing a citizen communication plan to educate our citizens on right-of-way-related issues. Leveraging the current email and text alerts and postcard mailings are some of the ways in which our staff can educate our citizens on this very important issue.
Matt, is there anything you want to offer for what's in our packet? Oh, I'm sorry. We need a second for the sake of discussion. Hang in there. Is there a second to Bob's motion?
A second for the purposes of discussion.
Staff is here to answer questions that may arise.
Okay. Are there questions, Matt, before we move forward? Any discussion? What's being proposed?
Yeah, I think, Matt, so 26-1, I don't think we got the wording right here with the red line because it didn't talk about any, putting any pause on any new right-of-way encroachment code violations. It simply said extend the abatement period from six to nine months on current right-of-way violations. So I think we missed that, and I think that's a really important item for us to include.
Staff recommendation, if you want, even if you want to simply pause enforcement, would be to extend the abatement period. So during this six-month abatement period, staff has sent courtesy letters out to property owners who may have a potential violation. We haven't even made a formal determination yet. As of, I believe, last month, we completed our initial sweep of the island and sent out all the courtesy notices associated with this. So even a three-month extension of the abatement period would preclude staff from doing anything else because we've already notified the property owners. So you wouldn't necessarily need to add anything to pause enforcement because we're at a holding pattern on enforcement until the abatement period actually ends and we could send out actual notices of violation at that point.
So the motion that in our discussion, so it asks to, simply to pause any new right-of-way encroachment code enforcement, not to keep issuing letters, and then instead of going six months, give them nine months of abatement.
We would not issue any, if the abatement period is extended three months, right, which is the proposal here, because there was a six-month abatement period, extending the abatement period three months would be nine months total. As I mentioned, the staff enforcement effort for right-of-way encroachments, based on the ordinance that was adopted in July, is completed until the abatement period is over. We have no further enforcement actions to take because we have just been sending courtesy notices at this point. So my point is that by simply extending the abatement period three months, you, in essence, tell us not to do anything else for another three months because we've already done, well, our part of it for the abatement period. I mean, should council request or direct staff to do anything else, that doesn't have to be put into the ordinance necessarily. But the abatement period is in the ordinance, so included in the red line draft to extend that. Should that be council's wish?
So the process worked as the process should have worked. And that is citizens complained about cleaning up the right-of-ways in the street ends. We, after determination with the town manager, found out that staff previously had been told not to enforce these ordinances. And so this council unanimously voted to direct staff to go back to enforcing the ordinances as should have been happening all along. And then the process was turned over to staff. And that's the way the process works. This council makes the policy or sets a direction. Staff implements it. In this case, however, we had a gap, and the people perceived it as a failure because there was not an education, what I'll call an education component to this process. Some people don't know what a right-of-way is, period. Some people don't know where the right-of-way is. Some people don't understand what the purpose of the right-of-way is and who owns it. They say, I mow it, so it must be mine. Well, no, it's not. So we missed a good opportunity to really educate the public by sending these courtesy letters, which was a good step to put them on notice. But we missed a critical step in telling them what was going to be happening. I don't think we capture all nearly 10,000 residents in this meeting, either live or video. And so in this case, we really needed to take an extra measure to let folks know through communication means what was going to be coming their way. This hasn't happened for a period of time. It should have been. It's going to be happening now. And here's what you can see. You're going to get, if you have a potential violation, you're going to get a courtesy letter. And you're going to have this amount of time. So my request would be to ask for the development of an education plan, even at this point in the process, to educate the public. We've been very successful with videos. The chiefs have done videos that have been very successful. But I think we need to get some information out there to the public so that everybody hears the same information from the same source and the rumor mill stops about who's trying to do what. And we clarify what a right-of-way is, that it's established by North Carolina general statute, yada, 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 yada. And I've even asked the manager, is it possible to tell us what the right-of-way is on every street in Oak Island? And I believe that it is. We know that for most streets, it's probably 60 feet. But on some streets, it may not be 60 feet. So that people have an idea of where the right-of-way is on their property if they don't have a current survey. So that's my two cents, is I just, I think we need an education campaign. I think we missed our opportunity to do that. We've paid dearly for it, paid dearly for it. So I would ask my colleagues to consider that we ask the manager and staff to put together such a campaign to notify our residents about what this process is and what's going on.
So, if I may, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, I'm finished.
It's a history here, a long and checkered history, going back at least a decade. And you will recall, during the run-up to the current enforcement campaign, I cautioned repeatedly on the record not to go too fast, too far. And you are right, Councilman Carter. There was a unanimous council that said to this management team, enforce the right-of-way and do it diligently, fairly, and without exception. So I'm opposed to pausing enforcement. I'm all for continuing education plan. But I think management has to have the authority and the discretion to modify this as need be. And council has the obligation to continue to monitor that. But we're frankly four months in, and it's the first time an administration has said, this is the law, we're going to enforce it, we're not going to look the other way, we're not going to make exceptions. I don't want to stop that process. That's what we fought for for 10 years. Failed right-of-way campaigns, ignoring it, pretending it's fine, citizens complaining, my property value, this is obscene, I'm looking at this, this is way, way unacceptable in my neighborhood. That's finally ended. Now, we can continue education, that's fine. But my vote is we continue enforcement and we let management have the discretion and the opportunity to adjust this if adjustments are needed. That's why we have professional management. Council was clear, you're absolutely right. Enforce the right-of-way. We were 5-0 on that, after a long discussion of gravel and this and that, right? Either we have rules or we don't. It's come down to that. And yes, there's going to be some pushback, and people are going to be unhappy. That's all part of it. No matter how well you try to educate people, that's just going to be part of it, right? But the fact of the matter is, it's law. Those are our utilities. We have a right to preserve them, and we want to do that in an equitable way. But we also have to be willing to commit. And I don't want to back away from a commitment that we made after 10 years of ignoring it and non-action and excuse-making, right? People were saying, I don't have access to my public, I don't have access to the intercoastal. I don't have beach access. I have all kinds of offenses in my neighborhood, and you're not doing anything. You drive by it every day and you do nothing, right? I don't want to hear those complaints anymore. I'm not hearing those. I'm hearing, hey, I got cited. Well, you need to move that yacht out of the right-of-way. No, you can't park there indefinitely, and so on. So, yes, I'm all for education, but I'm not for cutting the legs out from under management. No, that I don't support.
Bill?
I agree with everyone else, what they've said. We have an education problem. But I'm going to take a different approach to it. Our education problem, in my opinion, has been the town council did not make it clear to the town administration what the town council expected and wanted. There were so many unintended consequences by saying, go enforce the right-of-way, period, stop. The town administration was told to go enforce the right-of-way. They did. And then we, after 567 letters, we start getting phone calls galore saying, I've had a rose bush in my front yard for 18 years. The town told me I could plant that rose bush. Now the town's telling me I've got six months to take it up or I'm going to have to start paying penalties and fines. That's our unintended consequences. Mr. Morrison came up in his three minutes and said two things. One, let's not have neighbors telling on neighbors. We're a better town than that. But the most important thing I heard him say was, 20-foot right-of-way? Just because in our deed books, back when it was Long Beach, Town of Long Beach and the Town of Yaw Pond, in the deed books, it would say, when you buy that property, there's a 20-foot right-of-way. So we can't go back into every deed and change the language in every deed for the last 25, 35, 40 years. But we can ask the town to enforce a 10-foot right-of-way and not enforce a 20-foot right-of-way. We don't have to have an ordinance. We don't have to have a referendum. We can just advise the town administration to enforce a 10-foot right-of-way.
I'm going to, you would need to put that into the ordinance.
Okay, we'll put it into an ordinance, but that's all we have to do, is put that in an ordinance, okay? Secondly, when we get ready to talk about putting that in an ordinance, under no conditions can I justify telling somebody a police car and a fire truck is going to have to drive 19 feet into your front yard. I am all fine and dandy with anything. Councilwoman Carter, when we addressed this back in July, said, we need to address the hard structures. That is our unintended consequences. I agree wholeheartedly. We need to address the hard structures in our right-of-way. But that does not mean tell an 80-year-old lady to dig up her rose bush. That means if you've got a concrete elephant six feet from the road... That means if you've got a concrete elephant six feet from the road, that needs to be removed. That is a hard structure in the right-of-way, in the 10-foot right-of-way. So, Mr. Kirkland, you're telling me that all we need to do is ask for an ordinance change with the planning board to enforce a 10-foot right-of-way?
Oh, you wouldn't even send it to the planning board? This is council action only?
Fair enough. We can get that acted on. That's what we need to do. Education, we need to tell everybody, the ones that are in the wrong, and that's not 50%, that's 10, 15% of the people, in my opinion, that are in the wrong. They've got six months to clean that up, or they're gonna get a penalty or a fine. But, the way it stands right now, if we do a 90-day abatement, the 567 people, 91 days from now, they're still facing a fine and a penalty. So, we need to get this addressed. Do we want 10 feet, or do we want 20 feet? How can we justify 20 feet? I cannot. And that would take those 567 letters probably down to 75. So, that's my thoughts.
Mark?
I agree with Councilmember Bach. You know, we have an ordinance on the books. We advised staff to enforce it because we had gone many years with no enforcement. We couldn't even get the major stuff done in those years. I can't tell you how many times Sheila Bell would sit in a meeting and yell and scream because we weren't enforcing the right-of-way or street ends. So, I'm glad we took action. Education, I mean, it went out through all channels of communication when we made the decision. Information's on the website, and I know people are like, "I don't go to the website." Well, I'm sorry, that seems to be how the 21st century works, is you go to a website. It's kinda tough. And we do give you six months to come up with a game plan. I've experienced cases where the people are complaining, and I say, "Well, when's your time up today?" Well, you sat there for six months with this letter, maybe two letters. I mean, there's a process, and now you want something done the day that you're gonna start incurring penalties on the next day? That doesn't, that's not how the education works, right? So, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Bach. I would prefer that we continue forward with business as usual, and if Councilman Kraft wants to introduce a text amendment, then that's something he can work on.
Any other comments?
Please. So, I think that the issue, the education issue, you know, agreeing with everybody here, I mean, that was where we, we own it, it was our decision, we made that error, and deepest apologies to everybody in our community for just going from 0 to 130 seconds, which is what we did. You know, the issue is, so people who have lived here for 10, 15, 20 years, and they've had something in the right-of-way, there's been no communication from the town, and they just assume everything's fine, until they get a courtesy letter. Now, the courtesy letter does say a six-month abatement period, but imagine the angst and the anger of people who haven't heard boo from the Town of Oak Island for 15 to 20 years, and the first notice they get, proactive notices, you're in violation. Even though it says courtesy notice, that created this groundswell of some very unhappy people. So, taking a step back, and Councilman Kraft, I agree with you, that maybe 10 feet's the right number, but my motion for a pause is to give staff time to figure out, is 10 feet the right number? Is it, should it be nine feet? Should it be 12 feet? To look where the actual infrastructure is, to see if it's 20 feet, or 12 feet, or eight feet. And by picking a 10-foot number right now, it's arbitrary and capricious. We're just literally just picking a number out of that error. So, giving staff time to come up with some recommendations in the next 90 days is why, that's really why I asked for the pause button.
So, I encourage this council and council next. So, rather than doing an arbitrary number for, you know, of protection for the road, that we consider the exceptions. So, exceptions like the rose bushes. That gives the town the maximum leeway to do what it needs to do administratively, be it fire, police, whatever that measure is, and zero in on what exceptions that, how that needs to be, or could be expanded, to address some of the grievances, the rubs that the people of Oak Island experience. So, that's a win-win. You do the exceptions, and you make clear about what the code, the language in the code, and still allow the town its ability to do what it needs to do from a safety perspective. And relative to the education, that happens to be my field, one of the advantages in what I would encourage, video, because text is, it's tough to read the codes. I don't know if any of you have actually been in and tried to read our codes that guide our town, but it's not for the faint of heart or the uninformed. One of the things that a video would do, which would include graphics, right, would include what the right-of-way is, all the basics, but would also then provide some details about how to measure your right-of-way, and which areas are protected, where to dig, where not to dig. So, there are a number of things, and a well-done video would allow citizens to self-regulate. They won't have to get a letter from the town, right? They'll be able to self-regulate, because a good video will show them, or tell them why it's important, and show them how to make their own determinations. And if questions, right, that they could go to the GIS link that the county has to, if they don't have a survey to see where their property, the points of their property lies, you know, so by doing a really good video, you're giving people the ability to make their own determinations, and that's really all I have to say about that.
If I can jump in, thank you, Mayor. Unintended consequences, let me say that word again. When we voted on this in July, I spoke about if somebody to your left has gravel in their right-of-way, somebody in the right has gravel in their right-of-way, then who are we to tell you, with your house in the middle, that you can't have gravel in your right-of-way? And that's what we were voting on that night. And as a side issue, it was important to me to tell little kids they could have a basketball go at the end of the driveway, and that's what we voted on that night. Councilwoman Carter pointed out, we also need to address the hard surfaces in the right-of-way. We all heard that, and we said, "Yes, we need to address the hard surfaces in the right-of-way." And that is what we voted on that night. Our lack of education, we told the town administration to go forward and address, and wow, they did. So, tonight, Councilman Chilo, other members, I would love for us to, tonight, as the mayor said, address the exceptions as to what is not a hard surface, then go with Councilman Chilo's 90-day abatement. But, people right now are being told, "You have to dig up your rose bushes that are 15 feet into your yard, and maybe 90 days from now, we might address it and tell you, nah, we changed our mind on it. We can clean that, we can clean that up tonight." So, that stuff's just lurking out there, and we need to address it, and then get on with abatements, waiting time periods, but there's some easy decisions, it's just common sense, that we need to jump in there and do.
Well, the right exceptions will reduce the pain points that the public is feeling, as I said, and still give the town the ability to do what it needs to do from a safety perspective. And we have a short list of exceptions on page 22. So, the question before you, or really, it's for council next, would be my recommendation that they look at the exceptions and determine what other exceptions, whether these are good, and what other exceptions council want the town to consider. Trees, maybe. Rose bushes, not a big deal. But, there are also some violations that, in my mind, are common sense. A tree that's a foot into the right-of-way. You're gonna make someone move a tree and risk it dying for the sake of 12 inches. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So, there are considerations like that, that council knew certainly could consider.
And it's kinda hard to explain to people that, while the city's out, while the town's out planting trees in the right-of-way, that we don't want trees in the right-of-way.
It's interesting, just as an observation, that no one questions the Department of Transportation's right-of-ways. They don't even come into question. But, the town has, every town, has rights of way. Oftentimes, they're separated by a sidewalk. So, the sidewalk, you know, everything on one side of the sidewalk belongs to the homeowner. Everything on the other side of the sidewalk, including the sidewalk, belongs to the town. So, because we don't have curbs, and many, and our side streets don't have sidewalks, it makes a much more difficult determination. But, we don't question the DOT's rights of way, but people do question the rights of way in front of their homes. They're all the same. They're all the same, and they're there for a reason. Safety is the principal one. So, we have a motion in front of us for a 90-day abatement period. Are we ready to vote?
I want to know where we are on the exceptions. I'm happy to vote, but I wanna know where we are on the exceptions.
They're right on page 22 currently.
Yeah, well, I'd like clarification on what we're gonna accomplish in that 90 days. What's our laundry list of things that need to be done? What things do we need staff to look at and bring back to us? What things do we need to look at and think about?
It's just delaying.
I don't wanna just kick it down the road. I wanna have, if we're gonna delay it, I wanna have tasks that need to be completed.
I think you will need a motion, text amendment to, if council next so desires, to adjust to a 10-foot rule, which Mr. Kraft is championing. Mayor is talking about creating a longer or codifying the exceptions list. That's fine, but I'm not for the abatement. I don't wanna stop. When we have a manager and staff that says, "Okay, you want us to enforce the right-of-way ordinances, are you there?" And we say, "Yes, we are," unintended consequences are not, that is a commitment, and this is a mistake, in my view. Adjusting, right? Better education, changing the ordinance, okay, those are all adjustments that we can do while we're in motion, instead of just halting everything. And I think, you retreat on something like this, the next time you have a tough decision as a council, you're asking for trouble. You're just inviting it, because people are gonna say, "They don't really mean what they're saying." Or, enough people come and complain, they'll stop. And if we really believe this is important, we need to give management the opportunity to adjust. There are a couple of adjustments that have come up here, and I support all the adjustments. I just don't support stopping and saying, "It's all wrong." It's not.
Bill, could you and Bob, would you all be in agreement to asking staff to bring this back at the January meeting? If we don't go forward with the grace extension, but bring the right-of-way ordinance back to us in January, and let us, with council next, look at the whole right-of-way issue, exceptions, distance that we're gonna enforce, all of that?
I feel we have to have a complete understanding on the exceptions.
Right.
And we have to get away from this 20-foot mentality. We have to have an understanding on a 10-foot right-of-way. I like 10-foot right-of-way. If somebody likes 7, 8, or 11, we can talk, but I like a 10-foot right-of-way. And I wanna get to the exceptions, and we're all saying the same thing, we just don't know when we're getting there.
Would you all be in agreement, though, to having that on our January agenda to be decided? Make those exceptions and the distance and every component that we need to look at?
The only problem that's gonna happen is there are people who have gotten a letter back in June, and come January, the fines are gonna kick in. So, if we don't do an abatement, then we're gonna be fining people and then deliberating after the fact. So, there's gonna be a lot of people of the 567, not sure what the breakdown is, but a number of people got them early on. And if it takes us a meeting or two to get through this, then we've got a lot of people that are gonna be getting fines.
They've had six months to work on it. I'm in agreement with Councilman Bach. The motion doesn't encompass any of this discussion that's been extended, so I would like to call the vote, if we could, on the current motion.
Before you do, Mr. Martin, let me ask this. I liked what Councilwoman Carter was proposing, and I wanna swear in our new candidates as fast as anybody else does. Their families are here, they wanna get on with getting sworn in, have some pictures taken. But, if it takes us an extra 10 or 15 minutes to iron out what the exceptions are, we could do that tonight.
I worry that we're gonna miss something, that we're gonna, in haste to try to get something done, we're gonna miss something and come back and say, "Oh, we didn't think about that when we talked about it."
So, one advantage of doing it in January, if I may, is Matt, you could ask Matt to bring back to you data-informed, a list of exceptions. The things that really were not of a safety nature, that are reconcilable and easy for the homeowner to rectify, that really aren't problems. So, we already have the gravel and mulch and those kinds of things as exceptions, along with mailboxes and other items. So, rather than guessing tonight, you might ask Matt to come back with a recommended list based on the offenses to the code that, I'm sure you've got somehow a spreadsheet for what the categories of violations were, and make a determination on that basis.
Do you have that spreadsheet, Matt?
I can put it together with our software yesterday.
But, it's not with you right now.
I agree with Councilman Carter. This is a council next problem, right? I mean, doing it on the fly is a mistake. Taking away the authority we gave to management is a mistake. Let's just vote on this motion, and then there's cleanup work to be done, there are concerns that are ongoing, fine, but, you know, it's just not fair to do it like that, because we're gonna make a mistake.
And if we don't extend the abatement...
I'm not willing to extend it, because they've had six months.
So, if we could, so let's just kinda walk through this, is that, so people will be getting letters in January, and the fines will start kicking in. We're gonna be deliberating in January, maybe into February, and come up with exceptions of which some of these people who are getting fines are now no longer a violation. So, it just seems to be really messy if we don't, if we don't...
I think you'll get a better feel when you get the information as to how many people are still in violation, how many people would be impacted by what you're about to consider in January, in consultation with the administration. I think doing it here is just a mistake, at this point, really.
Along those lines, if we're gonna wait until January to address the exceptions and clean a lot of stuff up that we didn't clean up on the front end, we have authority. I mean, I don't have a big ego, but we have authority to make law for the town. We can ask Matt not to enforce those violations in January.
I think the January council meeting is intended to be scheduled on the 20th, is that correct?
It will be extended to the 20th.
Yeah, I mean, the abatement period doesn't end until January 18, so that's, that would be two days. be two days presumably until it's back in front of council. It's not a big ask of town staff to wait two days.
So you're saying you won't send letters out until you talk to us again?
If that's the council's directive, I can wait two days.
Right. And you can make the decision that anyone who now has relief because you created exceptions, you waive the fine. I mean, they won't even get the letter until February. So you just go ahead and say, here's the new list of exceptions, and we waive all of those who get relief, who fall into these exceptions, and you move forward. So...
And then you know what they are and how many people are affected by it.
Right, exactly. Get the data, look at it, make a decision.
And then you can also have an opportunity to further explain how to go about securing an encroachment agreement, if that's the direction someone wants to go.
Mr. Martin, Mr. Bach, I sure am going to miss whether you all can get to the bottom.
So we have a motion for an abatement period of 90 days.
Madam Mayor, I'll withdraw that motion.
Okay.
And let's put another motion out there.
There another motion?
I think Councilwoman Carter was about to propose a motion that...
I liked what Councilwoman Carter was saying, if you can get it into the wording of the motion.
That you were going to...
Lisa?
I don't want to put words on you, but you were urging that Councilman Chillo and Kraft develop a list of things for consideration for council next. This is clearly a council next issue, right? Mayor next issue. And that list then would be circulated to the new council and maybe, depending on how quickly it's developed, actionable at the January meeting.
Right.
And per Councilman Martin's suggestion, you waive these for someone who is now in an accepted category, right? It's not that hard. If you had to, you could change, you could push back the January meeting so you got it all done before you actually are taking action on it. I believe that was your motion, or...
Pretty close.
That was your thought process.
Pretty close. So I guess if I had to try to put it into something that Lisa can decipher, it would be a motion to direct staff to bring back to the January council meeting the right-of-way ordinance with a list of exceptions, potential exceptions, giving us some data as to what the violations have been in terms of non-safety items. What am I missing?
And a less stringent 20-foot right-of-way.
And so, well, then that would be to look at, look at the right-of-way ordinance as a whole, every component, every component of it.
May I add to your motion?
Yes, you may.
Because I don't want to forget your major point. And the idea that upon consideration, administration will consider a follow-on educational program, right? And the mayor suggested J.O., but, right?
Right.
Just leave it open-ended.
Educational component.
Let them deal with it.
And the motion would also include directing staff not to send violation letters until the council meeting has determined what the ordinance is going to be.
I can second that if that's an actual motion.
Hold on. You have, Lisa, do you have it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead and second it. She's got it.
There's a second? All in favor?
Can we play that back?
Just testing me.
What I thought I heard was Councilwoman Carter say that we're putting a pause.
No.
On new enforcement.
Not a pause, but that if the deadline, the grace period is over two days before the council meeting, that we just direct staff not to send notice of violations until after that council meeting determines what the ordinance really is. So it's not a 90-day, it may be a couple of day lag that violations don't go out until you know what you're actually enforcing.
Would you like the motion read, sir?
Bob?
Bob, would you like the motion read?
Please.
Okay. It's a motion to direct staff to bring back to the January council meeting the right-of-way issue with a list of potential exceptions, giving us some data as to what the violations have been. Mayor Portembach added and was accepted that the administration will consider an additional education program. And then Councilmember Carter added to direct staff not to send violation letters until after the January council meeting determines what the ordinance will be.
Ladies and gentlemen, that's why she's clerk of the year.
All done. All right. You ready to vote?
Absolutely.
All right, so...
I'm sorry, who seconded it?
I second it.
Thank you, I didn't hear the second.
Before I vote, I want to remind everybody, Councilman Bach told us, when you start talking right-of-way issues, you're opening a big can of worms.
No one listened, but thank you.
But we're pretty far down the road tonight, I do believe.
Council, all in favor? It's 5-0.
Thank you.
Congratulations, council new. All right, the last item under all business is beach nourishment funding consideration. Catherine?
Yes, thank you. The town has an exciting opportunity to enhance our beach nourishment project. Staff in coordination with Moffett Nichols and Weeks Marine have developed a plan to expand the total area of sand by adding sand to two strategic areas. First is a proposal to add an additional 60,000 cubic yards of sand between the current end at northeast 43rd Street to extend to 52nd Street. That's essentially the Middleton Park complex area. And an additional 54,000 cubic yards of sand to be placed between third-place east and second-place west, which is essentially at Middleton Drive. These additions are due to the coastal storm damage mitigation grant of $3 million that you will remember council was made aware of earlier. We decided to be very cautious with a $40 million project and set it aside into contingency to make sure that there were no significant issues at the beginning. We feel very comfortable, including Weeks Marine and our engineering partners, that the project is going very well. They are on schedule, and they feel comfortable that at this time we could consider the additional placement. They are moving along quickly, so to make sure that they are able to do this extra work while they're here and they are mobilized, we needed to seize on this item immediately. So for council's consideration in this item tonight is the additional engineering work, change order for Weeks Marine contract, the resolution accepting the coastal storm damage mitigation grant, and the associated budget ordinance amendment.
Couple of questions, Catherine, if I might. The grant was $3 million, the change order amount is $3,49,500. The $49,500 is coming out of our budget...
That's correct. It would be from appropriated fund balance in your 47 fund, that is your beach nourishment fund.
Is there a reason why the change order can't be for $3 million?
That was the proposal for the additional work from the contractor.
I hate to see us pull an additional $50,000 out of our coffers. I'm willing to spend the $3 million grant for sure.
I think the proposal before us would give us sufficient coverage of the additional sand for the areas that have been receiving less sand, substantially less sand, and help us mitigate those gap areas. So I think it's, while they're here, this is a once-in-a-six-to-seven-year opportunity. We have the funds available, and I think it's well worth the money.
This 54,000 cubic yards, where would that extend us to?
From the 54,000 is at Middleton Drive. It's essentially from third-place east to second-place west. The other 60,000 cubic yards is here at the Middleton Park area, going east to 52nd Street.
I have a couple of questions. If, Bill, were you done, or Terry? Do you have more? First question, are we obligated to spend this grant with the current engineering contract? Or we're not obligated at all, right? We can stick it in the bank and save it for future maintenance programs or storm repair?
You're obligated for beach nourishment. I don't know the timeline because we haven't received the final contract award, so I don't know how long they would allow us to preserve it, but typically you do have a few years in which to use the funds.
Okay. And then, so my second question is, if my math is right, so for the first beach nourishment project, what was it, like 960,000 cubic yards at $34 million by Moffett and Nichol? I rounded up to a million cubic yards just for simple math. So we're paying .029 per cubic yard for sand. Under this agreement, for only an additional 114,000 cubic yards of sand, we are now paying .038 per cubic yard for sand. The cost of sand keeps going up. Why aren't we under the .029 contract of what we're paying for sand today, which would give us even more sand than what they're proposing? I'm just, I just get frustrated, and I apologize to the public and to belaboring this. The frustration comes with, in my opinion, the continued poor estimates and pricing that we get for buying sand and putting it on the beach. So they want to fill the gaps, and it's going to cost more money per cubic yard to fill the gaps. Why? I want someone to explain to me why we're going to have to pay for even more expensive sand. We're buying the most expensive sand on the planet, I think, right now, and now the price is going up again for this $3 million grant? I'm sorry, but I have problems, so...
Catherine, is there another mobilization?
Yes, there's additional mobilization costs because we'd be, they're moving west, we'd be asking them to come back east. So there is additional pipe placement cost, there's additional design, engineering cost to it because it was not in the original scope and the original design work.
I would disagree. They designed a beach with 1.6 million cubic yards of sand, and we're only getting 960,000. The design work was already done. They know exactly the gaps, they know the placement, they know the quantities. More engineering for, I'm sorry, it's, okay, I'll stop.
Well, no, I shall be extremely brief because this is a recurring argument we've had with Moffett Nichols. So essentially, they're charging us, and just doing quick back-of-the-envelope math, $240,000 in additional engineering.
The additional engineering is, I'm looking for the exact number, but I believe it's 20,000, it's right at 20,000, it's just the engineering design components.
Okay, but their cost sheet is 238 something. So they didn't account for this in the original plan, which was scaled back? Is that a correct understanding of this?
The way it was designed with the current placements and the tapering elements that they designed, my understanding is that they would need to come back and redo those areas where placement was not originally designed for.
Okay. I don't want to belabor this, I'll just say for the audience and council next, you know, one of the issues that we have had, some of us have had, I've had, with Moffett Nichols is they're constantly billing us, and the estimates don't seem to square up. And I understand we have a unique opportunity here, we're mobilized, et cetera, et cetera. But my larger issue is with Moffett Nichols, and I'll say what I've said many times before, we need to RFP our engineering contract to see if, if nothing else, what's out there, and also to send a message to Moffett Nichols that we're just not simply going to pay these bills when they show up with them.
That'll happen this morning.
Can't happen soon enough, but, okay, I'm done.
Council, do we have a motion?
Catherine, just one more question, and make sure I heard you correctly. You said that if we don't spend the $3 million now, we have a couple of years to spend it. But if we don't spend it now, we're not going to go through another beach nourishment for another seven years, six, seven years. So that money...
And we have an additional grant that we'll be using for dune plantings, so we couldn't even use it for that because we have that covered as well.
So the problem with not spending the $3 million now is if we come back to put sand on the beach, it will be more expensive because there'll be, the mobilization costs will be much greater because they're starting from scratch, just a consideration.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Is there a motion, council?
I'd be happy to make that motion, Madam Mayor. I make a motion to the following approved construction contract change order number one with Weeks Marine, Inc., in the amount of $3,000, not $3,49,500. Approved amendment three to stage 3A contract with Moffett Nichol in the amount of $20,800. Authorize the town manager to execute the necessary documents following legal review and adopt the Town of Oak Island 2526 Beach Nourishment Project Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Project Resolution as presented, and adopt the associated budget ordinance amendment.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Let's move it.
All in favor? Four opposed, one. With that, we're going to take a 15-minute break to recognize our elected officials and have a short reception. So what you can anticipate is, after 15 minutes... Oh, I'm sorry.
Want to recognize.
Presentation first. We have some plaques for outgoing members.
Well, that's the recognition, that's part of the 15.
Yes, I just didn't want the crowd to disperse.
Oh, yes. Right. So the recognition and the, following the reception and the recognition will be the installation of our new mayor and council members. So don't go anywhere.
Mayor, if everybody would join us on the left for recognition of our outgoing members over here.
If we could have your attention, please? So it's my pleasure to, Mark, to speak to you first. As I said before, it's my belief that...
As I said before, it's my belief that diversity and knowledge, skills, ability, and experience really enriches a group and ultimately allows them to make better decisions. And you certainly, your thoughtfulness has contributed in that way and made for a better council. The town is better positioned for its bright future, given your contributions, notably your keen focus on the budget and its bottom line, your financial acumen that enable the towns to match the state's $20 million beach nourishment grant, which is going on as we speak, your advice in council on technology issues, and as the town's appointed representative to the RPO, which is where transportation projects receive prioritization. Prioritization for funding, I should say. And then your assistance on achieving pedestrian safety and focus on multimodal transportation. So I just want to thank you for your service to your community. And John, through your eight years of service as a council member and years prior on any number of committees, your contributions leave an indelible mark on Oak Island. As a skilled leader, your consummate professionalism, your resolute commitment to the principles of fairness and equity and the ability to maintain a laser focus amidst chaos have helped the town navigate any number of complex issues. Tonight is just an example. To cite a few worth mentioning would be our 10-year journey to this beach through two different councils, the beach nourishment, any number of budgets, your leadership in helping the town realize paid parking, an initiative that yields the 1.3 million annually, and last but not least, your enviable command of the English language. Oak Island's future is better positioned to realize its very bright future. A simple thank you seems so inadequate.
We're having a little technical issue here. Okay. It's my honor to speak about Mayor White. And she said, "Well, what will you do?" And I said, "Well, there are a lot of things I could, a lot of stories I could tell because it's been a long and winding road." But I would say two things. She conducted her office with passionate joy. Everywhere she went and she was everywhere, people were lifted up because she had such enthusiasm for the town, for town events, and ultimately for the citizens. And that is a multiplying effect in a government when you have a leader who's visible, who's upbeat, who's optimistic, and who stands next to you. And the other thing I would say about Liz, and she mentioned it earlier, her election was one of the most significant elections in the history of this town. When the history is written, they will see '21 as the turning point, away from darkness, onto a much better path, a genteel path, civilized path. And she was truly the unknown factor. And it demonstrates to me the power that you have as citizens and says to me the courage of one individual to stand up against an incumbent and say, "I can win. I can provide a better life, a better form of government." So Liz, your election will be noted.
Thank you.
Tuesday, December 9th meeting of the Oak Island Town Council. This is also technically the organizational meeting for the town council. And so our next item of business will be to swear in our mayor-elect, Mayor Chris Brown. And our town clerk, Lisa Saitz, will meet him over at the podium.
I, Christopher Brown, do solemnly swear.
I, Christopher Brown, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the office of mayor.
On which I'm about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
According to my best skill and ability.
According to my best skill and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. At this time, I'd like to call Tommy Brown to be sworn in.
Is it flipped? Yes.
I, Tommy Brown, do solemnly swear.
I, Tommy Brown, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of town council member.
Of the office of town council member.
On which I'm about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
According to my best skill and ability.
According to my best skill and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call up Chasey Bynum to be sworn in.
Okay, come over here. You want him. Okay?
I, Chasey Bynum, do solemnly swear.
I, Chasey Bynum, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the constitutions and the law of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duty.
Of the office of town council member.
Of the office of town council member.
On which I'm about to enter.
About, on which I'm about to enter.
According to my best skill and ability.
According to my best skill and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for sticking around this long. And congratulations to my fellow new town council members. We're definitely looking forward to all working together very well. Our first order, our next order, is the selection of the mayor pro temp for the year of 2026. With that, I open the floor for any nominations.
I would like to nominate Bill Kraft for mayor pro temp.
Okay.
I would like to nominate Terry Carter for mayor pro temp.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, then at this time, please fill out your ballot.
Okay, Mayor. We have three votes from council members Carter, I'm sorry, three votes from council members Kraft, Bynum, and Brown for Bill Kraft to be mayor pro temp. And then there were two votes for council member Carter, and council member Carter and council member Chula.
Thank you. So, Mr. Kraft, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Next, I'd like a motion for the consideration of the 2026 Town Council Meeting Schedule.
I'd like a motion to open the discussion about the official calendar.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. All right, thank you. Ms. Carter, I know as you've made the motion, you can start. I believe you did have a conflict.
I did have a conflict. I notified the manager and the clerk that I'm not going to be able to attend the regular June meeting, June 9th meeting. So I would ask for consideration to select another date, if possible.
16, acceptable?
It is.
One week?
No, Tuesdays that month are totally out.
Do you have a proposal?
I'm agreeable to any day but Tuesday.
Is it, how about that week but on the Wednesday?
That's perfect.
Okay, so on the 10th?
Yep.
9th to the 10th?
Okay, actually, and I had my date wrong. It's, the meeting was on the 10th, so it moved from the 10th to the 11th. My apologies.
Thursday.
Okay. Right? 9th?
No, the meeting's on the 9th.
9th, okay, so it moved to the 10th. That's the wrong year.
June 10th. Okay.
And I believe, Mr. Chula, you also have a conflict.
I do. Scheduled from March 10th, which happens to be my birthday. But I've got a conflict. I've got to be on the West Coast for a business trip all week. And requesting that we can maybe move to the next week, which would be March 17th for the town council meeting and 19th for the spillover date. I need that.
Any objections to moving it to the 17th?
Thank you very much.
Any other changes to be considered?
No, but thank you all for accommodating the January request. And the retreat as well.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the calendar as changed?
I make a motion to accept the calendar as changed.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor? Five oh. The final thing under New Business is the selection of a representative to the Cape Fear Council of Governments. Have a motion on?
I will make a motion that we nominate Councilman Tommy Brown to serve as the town's representative to the council of government.
Is this council governor or is this the RPO?
Thought it was Cape Fear RPO.
This is council.
The RPO is, right. And then within the, is the RPO correct?
Yeah, so typically, council of governments, we've asked the mayor to.
Yeah. So I rescind that motion.
So I'll make a motion to nominate our mayor to.
I will second that gladly. Now that I'm stuck on his toes, I will.
No, that's fine. So, all in favor? Five oh. Okay.
Just for clarification, do you happen to know when we'll select the new RPO representative since Mr. Martin is gone?
So my understanding is that the mayors actually make that selection? And I do not have a timeline at this point as to when, or even if Oak Island will retain a voting member or not.
I spoke to Sam at the RPO. Mark's term ends this month, so the town, well, first of all, it was Mark's, not the town's, but it was set to expire anyway, so that discussion's sort of moot. Sam said the mayors of Brunswick County will meet in January or February to vote to fill that empty seat. Sam's also offered to meet with staff to inform new members or current members who aren't as up to date with the RPO. So I can work with Catherine, well, I guess, first ask if folks are interested, and then work with Catherine and staff to set up a date. Sam was very willing to come down.
So we'll deal with the RPO when that meeting comes. All right, that's the conclusion of New Business. I believe we did move administrative reports.
Yes, thank you. That went so quickly. Make sure Mike gets the PowerPoint uploaded for me. All right. Trying to make this very brief in honor of your first night. Just an update on what, of course, is our largest project going on right now, the sand placement project. A wonderful overhead shot for everyone. This is the progression, the progression from east to the west coast. You can see it there. You can see the sand ramps. I just thought these were wonderful shots of our ongoing beach nourishment. So the status right now, they did mobilize. The sand placement has commenced. As you just saw, the base contract is approximately 27% complete. So far, so good. No major issues. And we have weekly construction meetings ongoing, led by our assistant town manager, Kent Jackson. And all of the regulatory agencies are actively engaged and involved and heavily monitoring. And again, the project is on schedule. We're trying to do the best we can to continue to keep the public informed through our website. We have a dedicated area called Sand on our website. Of course, it's been promoted through the current, the town's newsletter. And we have an upcoming media day planned for December 7th. More information to come on that. We're trying to really be able to address all the media's concerns and questions. And we have notified some of the homeowners that are impacted by their private walkway. This is the addition that was just approved tonight, a visual of where we were discussing. It was a grant-funded expansion of sand. We wanted to take that opportunity while the construction company is here on Oak Island to add sand to these two locations. Just briefly, I wanted to bring to your attention tonight, we have been made aware of a revenue reduction potential that will hit council. This coming budget process of the ABC Board has informed us of this possibility. They voted at their November meeting to decrease our revenues. And a rough calculation, that's approximately $85,000 a year to the town. So it's pretty significant. So I wanted to bring it to your attention as soon as I was made aware of it. We are in ongoing dialogue with them, and a legal review is in process. But I would make the suggestion perhaps tonight that you would all give us consensus to continue to discuss with them the possibility of not having this reduction or at the very least to request to their board that this be delayed until July 1. Their fiscal year runs the same as ours does. This would give us an opportunity to prepare for that. Their vote was to start this impact immediately at January 1. With your consensus, I will continue the legal and ongoing communications with their board.
Mayor, if I may, if my fellow board members would agree. Mayor, if I may, if, if my fellow board members would agree with me, I actually, given this, I can't believe it, but given this, I would like to request that the ABC Board come do a presentation to us, and I would love to see their current and projected revenue, I'd like to see their, their location plans, hear their future plans. For them to do this and without any consultation with the town is concerning to me, so I'd like for them to come and talk to us about it.
And especially having reviewed the minutes, and having reviewed the minutes, trying to really understand the rationale for this was, it was like trying to decipher hieroglyphics, and it didn't really, we couldn't really understand what the rationale was. And with respect to, are they looking, they have to give additional monies back to the state, so getting that, having them come in and give us a presentation and cover the bases, that would be, be much appreciated.
And I have concerns with these minutes being so sparse, that how can, what is it, three board members, the votes basically based off their recollection of the meeting, and when there are large impacts on this town, that we have to now reach out to three individuals to remember what they voted on, the exact motion that they voted on, and that seems extremely concerning as well. So, that new handbook not being a suggestion, but a directive, that if meetings do have budgetary impacts, that those meetings be quite a bit more robust than what we were provided.
And I believe everyone is in consensus to have them continue to move forward.
Please.
Please.
Absolutely.
Will do. Thank you. And just one more slide, I'm very excited, I'm sure you've all seen, the first crosswalk on Oak Island Drive is under construction, sidewalks and the signal, signalization are in process, and we do anticipate that to be complete by March. As always, your first meeting, I'll get to make my pitch, we continue to put out as much information as we possibly can from the town, we have a mobile app, you can get your information directly in your emails and texts from the town. Of course, our website is extremely robust, but as you all know, it is also in process of being revamped to an easier searchable website. So continue to report a concern also is available on the website, and hope that you all are able to get all the information you need about what's going on in the town. All I have.
I have one question for you. Have Citizens Academy dates been selected for next year? Selfishly, that was what got me to where we are now, so...
Yes, it's always the month of February, but the specific dates will be out very shortly.
Okay.
Rose will be advertising those for us. Yep.
Thank you. Any other concerns or items? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you for coming, everyone.